All right, good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, June 13th, to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Baker?
Here.
Galloway?
Here.
Lennon?
Here.
Piana? And Mayor Coulter?
Here, yes, thank you. We have a quorum. Councilwoman Piana notified us at the last meeting that she would not be here this evening. Do I have an excused absence for the councilwoman?
I would move to excuse Councilwoman Piana.
Is there support? Unanimous consent for that?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Our next order of business would be the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda that the council would like to make this evening?
I would move to adopt the approval or the agenda as presented.
I would actually like to make one change. I would like to move a consent agenda item up to presentations, only because Danny is here with us this evening, and rather than move it to the regular agenda, we'll move him up to the front so he doesn't have to wait. So if you don't mind, I'd like to move Consent Agenda B to Presentation E. Any other changes?
No, councilwoman.
My motion was not seconded, so we'll let that one die. I would move that we accept the agenda as amended by Mayor Coulter.
Thank you.
Support.
Any discussion? Sheri?
Agenda item G, the approval of the AT&amp;T right-of-way, would that in any way involve, I just learned, or someone told me, that AT-
Wait, excuse me, I'm sorry. Agenda item?
G.
Consent Agenda item.
Consent Agenda, so we're not there yet, yeah.
Not there, okay.
You can pull it when they get to Consent Agenda.
That's right. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the agenda.
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda passes. Our next order of business is Presentations. Our first presentation is from Ferndale Public Schools this evening. Hi, and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Stillger, communications specialist for the Ferndale Public Schools. Recently Roosevelt Primary School was named a National School of Character. They received this award for their overall culture of learning and their character building in their school. They're also the State of Michigan School of Character as well. Roosevelt, Coolidge, and Kennedy are Michigan Green Schools again this year, and Kennedy was named in the top 10 of green schools in Oakland County, that have 192 schools. Last week and the week before, we had three graduations. We had 205 Ferndale High School students graduate with over $2.7 million in scholarships. Over 50,000 of those were local. At University High School, 102 students graduated. It's a 98 percent graduation rate, and 97 percent are attending college in the fall, with two joining the armed forces.
That's great.
At our Adult and Alternative Education Ceremony, 190 students graduated, with 38 years separating the oldest and the youngest graduate, and 46 of them had children of their own. So we're very proud of all our graduates. We put together a very large graduation newsletter. It's available on our website, under ferndalschools.org, under District News. It's 14 pages, full of lots of information and pictures, and we encourage everyone to go check it out and see all the fantastic things our students did this year.
Last day of school this year is this Thursday, June 16th, and we wish everyone a safe and happy summer. For those students that are interested in registering for summer school, high school summer school registration is Wednesday, June 29th, for Ferndale High School students, and Thursday, June 30th, for non-district students. The brochure is on the homepage of our website, ferndalschools.org, and it has lots of details and cost. Ferndale Schools is also offering a free summer meals program, starting June 20th. There are flyers all around town, but little details are that anyone in the community 18 years and under is eligible for free lunch and free breakfast at five of our buildings. Anyone can come in and enjoy the meal. There are no financial requirements, no questions will be asked, just come on in and, you know, enjoy food for the summer. Any questions about the free meals program can be directed to our Food Service Department, which is 248-586-8703. We'd also like to remind the community that the Ferndale Schools is enrolling all summer at the Harding Administration Building, 2920 Burdette, and we have enrollment forms available on our website.
Great, thanks as always. Any questions from council? Thanks as always. Our second presentation this evening is a resolution of appreciation for retiring Police Lieutenant Brian Chakowski, and I believe Councilman Lennon is going to present that.
Yes, I will. Lieutenant Brian Chakowski, after serving the city of Ferndale and its citizens for 25 years, retired on May 10th, 2011. Lieutenant Chakowski began his career in law enforcement with the Houston Police Department from 1982 to 1986, and was hired by the Ferndale Police Department on May 9th, 1986, where he worked, where he was promoted to Sergeant in 96, and then promoted to Lieutenant in 2002, where he worked as a shift commander on both the midnight and day shifts. Chakowski was a member of the multi-jurisdictional SWAT team from '87 to 2001, served as an undercover NACADAS officer with Oakland County NACADAS Team from 1998 to 1990, and was selected as Police Officer of the Year in '91. He has received multiple awards, including department citations, unit citations, and the Police Purple Heart. As he concludes his career with the City of Ferndale Police Department, Lieutenant Chakowski looks forward to assisting with the coaching of the Michigan Red Sox Travel Baseball League, enjoying golf, and spending time with his wife, Rachel, and sons Matthew and Nicholas. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, Ferndale elected officials, do hereby express our community's deep appreciation and best wishes for a happy and healthy retirement to Lieutenant Brian Chakowski, as he retires after 25 years of dedicated service. Do I have enough support for that?
Support.
Support.
Thanks, thanks, Councilman. We'll make sure he gets to that proclamation. Thank you. Our next presentation is the Police Department Citizens Award. Chief, you want to do the honors?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, keeping with our new foundation of recognizing citizens who have helped the citizens of Ferndale and the Police Department, today we would like to recognize Brian Patterson.
Go ahead, Mr. Martin.
Brian, what occurred, this is an incident that occurred in April, late April of this year, at about 4:00 in the afternoon. The young lady was walking down Central Avenue near Troy. She was tossed by an individual wearing a mask. That person grabbed her in the shoulder and ripped the gold neck chain off of her neck. Mr. Patterson here was in the front yard when he was flagged on by the victim. It said she'd been robbed. Patterson being chased, ran after him, directed the police officers to where he was, when he ran into a store on Nine-Mon Road. The officers were able to apprehend the individual without any, but he didn't hurt. For that, number one, we believe that that was in great recognition of that service. A couple other things I would tell you about Mr. Patterson. Number one, his father was a retired lieutenant from the Ferndale Police Department, and his grandfather was a retired lieutenant from the Ferndale Police Department. And after speaking to his father about this incident over the telephone, he also made me not only give him our citizens' award, but he also wanted me to pin the junior police officer there.
Thank you, Chief, and, but in all seriousness, job well done. Thank you for your efforts there. Very impressive efforts, thank you. Our next presentation is a proclamation on behalf of the city in recognition of Flag Day, and I'm going to read a portion of this proclamation, because Flag Day is coming up on June the 14th, and the first flag of the United States was authorized by congressional resolution on June 14th, 1877, and in 1949, Congress officially designated June 14th of each year as National Flag Day, to be observed by display of the flag and appropriate ceremonies. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag was first used in 1892, was made official by the Congress in 1945, and through the years has been recited to reaffirm our love and loyalty to the flag and to our country and to the ideals to which we have, that have made America a great nation. And so therefore, we proclaim June 14th, 2011, as National Flag Day in Ferndale, and we urge all citizens to fly the flag on Flag Day. So, thank you very much. I'll present this to Frank when he comes up later, but a great, a great way to remember the great things about our country. So, June 14th, everybody, is Flag Day. The next presentation, E, Danny Hicks. Danny, I know you're here. Would you mind coming up? We have a little something for you. Danny Hicks is a student at Ferndale High School, and, yeah, come on up here, and I think I'll come up and do this up here as well. We meet again. How are you doing?
Good. I got a chance to meet Danny over at the high school when Congressman Levin was there. Congressman Levin was one of the ones that had to write a letter of support in order to get admitted to one of our service academies. It's a high honor to be admitted to one of the service academies, and it's always a proud day when a Ferndale student gets that honor, and Danny, well, let me just tell you a little bit about what happened. So, on May 18th, Congressman Levin, U.S. Representative Sandra Levin, David Coulter, myself, and the Ferndale Schools congratulated, oh, thank you, Ferndale High School senior Danny Hicks, son of former Community Development and Finance Department employee Melinda Hicks, for being accepted into the U.S. Air Force Academy in Colorado Springs. To attend the U.S. Service Academies, a student must be nominated by a senator, congressman, the president, or vice president. In 2011, only 1,500 of the 10,000 applicants who applied were accepted into the academies. One of those exceptional applicants is Danny Hicks, who was nominated by Congressman Levin. Danny will not only be, Danny will not be the only member of his family to serve in the military. His grandfather, James Hicks, was in the Army, and his late grandfather, Merrill Lee, was a chief petty officer in the Navy during World War II. And it is outstanding young people like Danny who are the next generation of leaders in our community. He has been an exceptional student, carrying a GPA of 4.0 throughout high school. Glad you don't need that to be mayor. And being dual-enrolled at Oakland Community College. He's also the second-in-command in the state of Michigan for D-Malay?
Gay Malay.
Gay Malay, excuse me, a young men's fraternal organization, and has recently been elected as elder at Drayton Avenue Presbyterian Church. A real slacker, right? Yeah. The entire community is very proud of you. Congratulations on your achievement. Let me give you this, and let me be the first to give you one of these as well. If you don't mind, wear that, and maybe we'll get that as a picture as well. Danny Hicks, everybody.
Would you like to say something? Well, I just want to thank everyone. I know the Ferndale Schools have been incredible in helping me get in. I've had constant support from, just off the top of my head, at least 15 people, and many, many, many more were in support. I'm looking forward to going. It's a little hard to get excited to go, since I'm leaving to be yelled at, but it'll, that's only for the first year, then I get to yell at people, so I'm looking forward to that. All right, thank you all for your support.
It's not on the agenda under Presentations, but I see our county commissioner here, and I think you want to come up and say a few things. Craig Covey, I'll put you as number F presentation, if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening.
And city council members, and the city attorney, and our clerk and city manager, thank you. A real quick, couple items from the county commission. We last week debated a resolution to support the reinstatement of the film tax credit program here in Michigan, thinking that that was something important and that was very helpful with our economy and with jobs. The bad news is, unfortunately, that resolution failed, 15 to 9. All 15 Republicans voted no on that. Next meeting, we are going to have a debate on the Detroit River International Crossing. That might be something that would attract nonpartisan or multipartisan interest. So, again, an issue we think is pretty important to our region, endorsed by business associations, chambers of commerce, labor unions, almost everybody supports building a new bridge.
And Burke Patterson.
Yes, so we'll see how that one goes. I also want to take a very brief opportunity to thank everyone with the city that helped us out with Ferndale Pride. I was absolutely amazed and very proud that we pulled off a very, very successful weekend. In particular, I want to thank the city clerk, the mayor as well, all the members of council, and all the staff and the Police Department. We were just amazed at the success. About 40 volunteers pulled together. The businesses were very happy, because we managed to fill the businesses downtown, certainly on Friday night, but also on Saturday and Sunday, June 4th and 5th. I want to also thank, in particular, Tom Pearlman. If you drove downtown anytime near that week of June 3rd, the entire downtown was a flutter with a sea of rainbow flags. It made me very, very proud, and it was Tom Pearlman and some help from his staff and the folks just for us, as well as the DDA that pulled that off. And I guess the one thing that most impresses me about our ability to put on Pride this year was that everyone pulled together, from city council to staff, to the Chamber of Commerce, to the DDA, to the businesses. We estimate that over the course of the three-day weekend, we brought somewhere between 5,000 and 10,000 people to downtown, and it appears that we have raised approximately $9,000 in proceeds that'll be divided among the four charities. So, again, thanks, everybody, to help out. One little request, if I may, Madam Clerk, for the next council meeting, if we could have on the agenda as a brief presentation, we're a little late this year, but the organizing folks from Ferndale Blues Festival would like to present a couple of awards, and also a check to Ferndale Youth Assistance from proceeds from last year's Blues Festival. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all the hard work, Craig. It was a very successful Pride. I know I marched and spoke more that weekend than in a long time, but it was great crowds, great energy, well organized, so thanks for all your work on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. That concludes our presentations. Our next agenda item is a public hearing, two public hearings, actually. Mr. City Manager, do you want to introduce these?
Sure. Both are issues with respect to liquor license. The first is the transfer of an escrow license with dance entertainment permit located at 141 West Nine Mile. The second is a transfer, well, it's not a transfer, it's an outdoor service area in the front for Maria's. I think they have one in the back, now they have one in the front, too. But both items are before you this evening as part of a public hearing.
And we can handle these both in one public hearing? Is that, is that appropriate?
We do a separate.
You should do separate.
We should do separate. All right, so I am going to call the public hearing on the transfer of ownership of an escrow 2010 Class C license for 141 West Nine Mile Open. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address us on this issue? All right, I don't see anyone. Is there, and then I will close the public hearing portion of it. Are there questions or comments from council on this issue? This is the property formerly known as Nine, or currently still known as Nine, I suppose, right? And I know Mr. Pearlman was here last time, taking the liquor license back into his possession. This is now the transfer to the new owners.
I would move to approve a transfer of ownership for the escrow Class C liquor license with dance entertainment located at 141 West Nine Mile, Ferndale, Michigan, from 141 Associates LLC to NMC Associates LLC, step two.
Support.
Moved by Baker, supported by Lennon. Is there any further comments, questions about this item? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That transfer passes, thanks. Now we need a public hearing on the liquor license for Dobro LLC, doing business as Maria's, for a new outdoor service area. I will call the public hearing to order. Is there anyone here in the public that would like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask council if they have any questions or comments. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
I need to make mention-
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, that would be in order.
I would move, I would move to recommend to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission approval of the request from Dobro LLC, doing business as Maria's, for new outdoor service, two areas in total, to be held in conjunction with a 2011 Class C licensed business located at 215 West Nine Mile Road in Ferndale.
Support.
Moved by Baker, supported by Galloway. Any further comments, questions? Now we'll call it all.
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That liquor license is approved. Our next order of business is call the audience. Call the audience, of course, is up to 30 minutes now, and more time if needed at the end of the meeting. We simply ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less on any issue that is not on the agenda, as you'll also have an opportunity to talk about agenda items at that time. Please state your name and address, or write it on the sheet in the back. Thank you very much. Frank?
Good evening, Council and Mayor.
Good evening.
Frank Flores here, representing the Ferndale American Legion, Post 330. In conjunction with the Flag Day tomorrow, our post has the honor of putting up a new flagpole to our newly renovated library. This is dedicated from our membership and our officers. Seeing to the fact that our charter will be resolved at the end of the month of this year, due to the fact of the membership and financial situation, we thought we put some of that money in good use and helped recognize our post in the past, and we have done so. So tomorrow, 11 o'clock, we're inviting the general public, yourself, everyone, to come out here in front of the library. We are presenting a 20-foot aluminum pole with the flag. We'll have a short ceremony. We've already had commitments of two honor guards, color guards, coming in from two American Legions from our neighborhood, which I ask, and our finest Police Department will be there. This will be presented to the public library because of the fact of many, many years I've gone by and not seen a flag there, and I thought it was a misrepresentation. So I brought that to attention to our membership, and we put our funds together, and at the end, the plaque is not there, but there will be a plate recognizing our donation, too. So you're welcome to come. Again, we ask the general public to be up there. We're going to start at 11 o'clock sharp, and we should be done in 20 to 30 minutes, a short program. And weather does look good. The other one is, I'm representing also the Ferndale BPOE Lodge 1588. They're hosting the Flag Day ceremony out at the Veterans Memorial at 6:00 PM. And if anybody's not seeing how they perform this activity with the flags, they usually have the Boy Scouts there, some dignitaries, so everyone also is welcome. And this will be at 6:00. This will go in conjunction with our Flag Day, which is, again, our mayor here brought to our attention a proclamation, which is our first. And I want to thank the city, myself personally, for letting me do this for the library. I went through all the channels accordingly, and you'll be impressed of the flagpole that we're going to put up, and the library board is looking forward to seeing this. So, 11 o'clock, and we hope to see everybody in there.
Thanks, Frank. I will be here. I'll see you tomorrow. Thanks for organizing that. Appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening. Sheri Wells, 315 West Troy. Three short things. My house was one of the, in the neighborhood, that got the energy audit a few months ago, and the caulking and insulation and things that I never knew were good places to put it well. There's a fringe benefit I realized in this past week, and that's the fact that usually, I have no air conditioning. I had a furnace blower installed when I had the furnace replaced a number of years ago, and when it gets really hot, then the furnace blower is what I use to cool down. When it gets to be about high 80s and 90s, I come to the library. Sunday, I roast. I didn't have to leave my house this time, because that same insulation that keeps out the cold also kept out the excess heat. So that's a further encouragement to me to continue with what they taught me, and for anyone else out there, if you weren't lucky enough, like a couple of us in this room were, then it will, it will save you lots of money and certainly keep it cool in the summer and warm in the winter. It's just amazing. Second thing is, last time I was here, four weeks ago, the day after, I emailed something to Chief Collins that commented on several different things in which the, his officers have been wonderful in the way they've treated calls that we've had to make to them. There were a couple times where they would send an unmarked car, so that a certain place wouldn't turn it down, just because they saw the police coming. A couple times, at least, they would come in from the west side for the same reason, and we were very appreciative of their consideration. They've been very professional. They've been as sympathetic as professionalism allows. They've been very professional. This includes the people when we're calling dispatch. It's really uncomfortable to be put in a position of being a complainer, and all of us have been talking about that, but they've been very courteous, very professional, and it looks like they are very good at using those decibel meters now, even if those don't tell the whole story. They've very carefully learned how to do that well. They've also, when we called them, when we had cars parked in the fire lane, and there's been a lot fewer since Mr. Fatides put that sign up there, to ticket and discourage that kind of parking. One officer recently explained very carefully to both my neighbor and me separately that the yellow line that's in front of his house is longer than it should be, and that anyone parked near his driveway by that is legal. And he took the time to make sure we both had the separate explanations. So they've been, they've been very good at, well, very good at doing their job in a very professional way. And the third quick thing-
You're at three minutes, Sheri.
Right. I have something to hand. Research was asked for a while ago. This says, "Researchers say bar patrons drink more and faster when the music is loud." And I will hand that to city clerk for your benefit.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would know that.
Good evening, Madam Council. You thought you were rid of me. Three weeks ago, I think, was the last council meeting, at which time Ms. Tolman told us that our ballots from the May 3 election had to be recounted, because somebody requested it, and that was very disappointing to me. If this was Chicago or Detroit, you might know that there could be some ballots in there that didn't really count, but this is Ferndale, and I don't believe that has ever happened here. One, I guess what upsets me the most about it is that that action by whomever cost this city $2,500, and that irks me to no end. We talked about the fact that we were asking council, as one of the things that we heard from the community so often, is be careful how you spend our money. And then one or a group of our citizens requested a recount that was useless. And I wish that that $2,500 could be charged to that person or persons, rather than to the city, and let us pay the $18 filing fee, and let them pay the $2,500. And I don't know if that's state law, code, enforcement.
It's state.
It's state. So we as a city cannot do anything about it. Okay, that disappoints me, but I'm very sorry that it happened, and it does work me that, because if anybody's worked with any of the elections, they know what a fine job Ms. Tolman does. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to address council this evening? If not, I will close. Call the audience, and we will move to the Consent Agenda. All items on the Consent Agenda are considered routine by the city council, and we enact them in one motion, unless there is any motions that have anything removed from the Consent Agenda. Are there any? We've already removed B. Any other additional items to be removed from the Consent Agenda? G. Item G, thank you very much.
Well, I just, can I ask a question first, or about whether or not it's even relevant?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Someone told me that AT&amp;T, their cable stuff does not have WFRN on it. Is that true, and would this in any way affect that, if we could make sure it does? Is it anything to do with it?
Mr. City Manager?
It does have something to do with it. Their system of delivery of the local channel is different than the others. We have had some discussions with their regional person, both Dell did previously, and I've spoken to someone there. That's in process to, it works differently, and they require that we buy, want a piece of equipment to ship the signal to their head end, whereas in the past, it was usually provided through the- was usually provided through the Comcast or its predecessors. And then they also, um, are keenly interested in renting T-1 lines to send that signal to them. But that's something that is in process. The, uh, Metro Act extension for this is not something that we have a whole lot of control over, and, um-
And it doesn't relate to my question?
It ki, it does only in that you are correct that WFRN is not on their station currently, but it's something that we're working on. And we have probably, I haven't verified this, but I'd need to, collected enough of the additional franchise fee from, uh, those customers that, uh, use the U-verse system in order to purchase the piece of equipment and the necessary mechanism, whether it's a T-1 line or something else, to get to their head end.
I guess she's, okay.
Mayor, if I could also just add, I mean-
Sure.
This right-of-way permit is, is not something that the city could withhold approval on over renewal to address that concern that you have. It's a separate issue.
Okay, that was, yeah, that was my question, if it was a separate issue, but I'm glad to hear that it's being worked on, because you know a lot of people rely on cable to-
It's just a money issue right now. They wanna, it's just a money issue right now. We need to buy an expensive piece of equipment to get on AT&amp;T.
Any other consent agenda items to be pulled? If not, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda.
I would move that we adopt the consent agenda, uh, in its entirety, uh, save item B, which it already handled.
Support. Moved by Galloway, supported by Baker. Any other discussion? I would just note that two items on the consent agenda are the, uh, end of the probationary periods for our police chief and fire chief. We're happy that that, to have you onboard in a non-provationary period, great job, guys, and look forward to-
Congratulations, guys.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Certainly. Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Uh, that brings us to our regular agenda. Item A is the appointment to the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission. This is a mayoral appointment with council approval, and I am recommending this evening, uh, the names of Craig Covey and Todd Blankenship to, uh, be appointed to the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission. And I think the chair of the commission is there. If you have any, anything you wanna add or, or say about these folks, uh, you are welcome to do so.
Mayor and Council. Uh, yes, I wanted to congratulate Craig, and Todd is, uh, out of town on work, so he said thank you also, if, if it went through, which it did. So, uh, thank you.
We have it yet, but, yes, almost.
Lot of, lot of trouble.
So, yes, thank you, uh, for the consideration, and, uh, we look forward to, uh, doing, uh, more great green work in the city. Thank you.
All right. Moved by Lennon.
I've gotta request for information before-
Oh, oh, okay. Well, let's make the motion, and then-
No problem.
Yeah, so, you wanna make that motion?
I move to, uh, appoint Craig Covey and Todd Blankenship to the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission.
Support.
Moved by Lennon, supported by Baker. Now, comments or questions?
Sure thing. Um, my question is, I'm, I'm wondering, this is a question for our city clerk, um, how many vacancies there are currently? Um, we've got a number of applications, and this seems to be one of the board's, um, that I believe we increased the number of seats on?
We did. This leaves one vacant seat, which Mr. Christie is aware of. The, um, committee, from my understanding, reviewed all of the applications and, and chose these two who were truly qualified.
Those qualified.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter.
Yes, thank you. That passes, and thanks for your willingness to serve in an additional capacity, Commissioner. Uh, regular agenda, item B, consideration of the fee schedule for fiscal year ending 2012, tabled from the May twenty-third meeting. And I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. Delacorte to come up, because some of the questions we had were, uh, in your ballpark. They may, I think the changes were made before you got here, but I, I know you've looked into the issue, and could you explain to us the rationale for the changes in your, at least in the fees in your neighborhood?
Absolutely. Uh, good evening, Council Mayor. Um, we, I have had a chance to take a look at it and have included in your packet a comparison chart that was completed in 2009, um, that breaks down our fee schedule in, in relatively great detail and in comparison with other surrounding and like communities. In my review of the fee schedule, it appears to me that it's, it's basically broke down into three parts. Um, the minimum permit fees and administration fees are being proposed to being raised to bring us, uh, approximately in the middle of the road with the rest of the surrounding communities, um, in our area. Um, in some instances, we're higher, in some instances, we're lower. Um, fee schedules for building department electrical permitting, um, plumbing permitting are, are all over the map, depending on how they're done in different communities. But I, I don't think anything that was proposed or included in the fee schedule is, takes us out of line with many of the surrounding communities. The second part of the fee schedule is, there was a lot of per-unit pricing done for motel, hotel, um, and different inspection services. What is being proposed in the new fee schedule is to get rid of, for the most part, the per-unit pricing and proposed flat fees. And I've spoken to some of the people who would be subject to these fees and feel that this is a much simpler process, um, than having to count units and, and submit on a per-unit basis. So, um, in both of those instances, unless council sees something that's absolutely, um, they feel is out of line, I, I support the proposed changes. Um, the third part of it was, there is a, um, some bonding, um, pricing that, uh, is not supported in the comparison chart, but after discussion with our building official, after looking into the pricing of other, some other communities and how bonding is handled, the bonding is, is designed, and it's not submitted by the homeowner, it's submitted, uh, on behalf of the homeowner by a contractor, if a contractor pulls a permit. And that bond is designed to ensure that, one, the work is completed, and that, two, um, final inspections are called for, that the contractor doesn't just leave the job without city staff doing a final inspection of the work that's been completed. In review of our, of our bonds, although they're not out of line with surrounding communities, um, they don't appear to be of any value or incentive to, um, require that final inspection. So they've been proposed to be bumped up quite a bit, um, and based on the amount of time staff has to spend to collect these bonds, process these bonds, and then return the bonds once the final inspection is done, I wanna make sure that's noted, this isn't money that the city holds on to. Um, this is money that's all returned at the end of the process. What is being proposed appears to me to be much more in line with something that would ensure or meet those goals of the final inspection being conducted and, and the work being completed appropriately, or the city being able to cash that bond and, and do something about it on behalf of the homeowner. So those are the three major categories. I understand my fee schedule, our department fee schedule's about ten pages long. Um, there's obviously many other minor changes involved, uh, minimum permit fees being, you know, taken from fifteen to twenty-five, and, but in, in, based on the comparison chart, and my predecessor, I believe, did a very nice job in developing that comparison chart, and has based it on a lot of very reasonable numbers in, in surrounding communities. So with that, I will, I'm here and, and willing to answer any specific questions, but in whole, it appears to me that the fee schedule is reasonable, and, and as staff, we support it.
Thank you. Are there questions of council? Yes, and Mayor Portman?
My question is actually about the builder's bonds. I've, I have heard, um, not through the city, but from, uh, residential contractors, that, um, they just go around the system and don't pull permits because we require them to bond. Has your office seen evidence of this? Do you think that the increased fees will make that better or worse?
I think if they're inclined to go around the, the system, that the amount of the bond doesn't really matter. Um, the, the percentage of the bond in relationship to the construction cost as proposed or as existing is minor, is minuscule. Um, and it is no incentive, and it, and truthfully, we, it, it doesn't cover the time and effort it takes for us to, to, to do it. So I think those contractors are inclined to do that regardless of what the cost is. I don't think what is proposed is a disincentive, um, to doing that. I, I think it's a reasonable percentage of the, of the construction cost. So for me to say that we should lower it because someone is already skipping out on it, um, is difficult for me to say.
Are there other ways that we can incent people to, to follow the rules? I guess would be my, my question. I, and I agree with your, um, assessment of the, the percentages of the total costs. The only one where it's, um, particularly large would be if you're at the low end of the $10,000 to $50,000, where a, a $5,000 bond would be fifty percent of your $10,000 project. It just, um, it's, it's, it concerns me that people are getting either substandard work or work that isn't ever approved. They might not know the system. Is there any education that we can do or outreach that we can do, if not to, uh, perhaps unscrupulous builders who might be coming into our town? Maybe to homeowners? Uh, this is what you should look for? This is how you should check out people's credentials?
I believe the city here is, is, is pretty solid in its practice currently. Um, we could certainly investigate, um, requiring additional acknowledgement from the homeowner, that the contractor needs to provide a bond, and that that's been provided. Um, we could investigate that. How that would be looked into and handled, um, from an administrative standpoint, may be different. But again, we, if you're dealing with a contractor who's looking to get around something, um, they're gonna make an effort to do that. Um, we can certainly do everything in our, on our part to educate the homeowners and, and do. Um, and, and in the short time I've been here, I realize that the city does do a fantastic job reaching out and talking to homeowners. Um, our code enforcement officers are very versed, um, very, uh, well attuned to stopping and talking to homeowners about whether permits have been pulled, what's necessary. To answer your question in short, the only thing I could think we could do maybe, um, in addition to what we currently do, would be to potentially require some type of homeowner's signature acknowledging that they realize that a bond must be provided, um, on the permit application. Um, and truthfully, I don't know if any other city does that. Um, I'm talking completely off the top of my head in relation to that, but it's something we could certainly investigate.
It wasn't meant to, to put you on the spot for a complete answer right here. It was just, it's been concerning to me over the last few years, um, when I've just, in, in conversations around town, I'll be at a meeting in Pontiac, and people will find out I'm an elected official in Ferndale, and they'll say, "Oh, my cousin's a builder, and he won't ever work in Ferndale because you have all of these bonds and fees." And I, my response generally was, there's usually a good reason that you need to demonstrate your competence and your reliability, but, um, it, it's, it's concerning when I hear that people don't wanna do business in my city, although it sounds like those are probably the people we don't want doing business in our city.
And I will say, I, I do believe, and I've spoken to the city financial, uh, manager about it, um, our fee schedule's entirely too complicated. Um, this is my first experience with it. I do believe that it can be probably shortened, truncated to some great extent. Um, that's part of what we're doing, and I believe my predecessor was starting to do by eliminating the per-unit pricing and, and some other things. Um, we have plans, um, prior to the next fee schedule being adopted, to reevaluating this, and hopefully shortening it and simplifying it. Um, I don't believe the values in what's being proposed are out of line, but I do think it's, it's entirely too complicated, um, even for staff. Um, with, with less staff and less administrative people to take the fees and collect them, with staff needing to be cross-trained, um, I believe our fee schedule needs to be simplified, um, and be something that's easier to use by both staff and the public. So we will certainly be looking into that.
That's an update I would look forward to, whatever you can do to make it easier for people to redevelop properties or add onto their homes.
I agree.
Thanks, Derek.
Great. Additional questions or comments of council? Uh, then a motion would be in order to accept the fee schedule.
Sorry, I'm not on that page.
I would move that we approve the attached fee schedule for the fiscal year ending, uh, June thirtieth, 2012.
Support.
Moved by Galloway, supported by Baker. Any additional comments or concerns? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. Uh, that fee schedule passes. Uh, regular agenda item C is a resolution of condolences. Uh, a longtime Ferndale resident and volunteer has passed away, and I just wanna read a resolution of condolences on behalf of the city. Norbert Brissette, ninety years old, uh, died on May twenty-fourth, 2011, in Troy. He was born in nineteen twenty-one in Hudson, Massachusetts, to George and Margaret, and Mr. Brissette was a master craftsman in woodworking for over seventy years. He constructed numerous church altars, furniture pieces, and the cross in the woods in Indian River. And Mr. Brissette proudly serves his country as a member of our armed forces in the Army Air Force during World War II. And Mr. Brissette was a member and former chair of the Ferndale Beautification Committee. He also enjoyed baseball, playing the harmonica, and spending time with his family and friends. He will be fondly remembered for his generous nature and sense of humor. And Norbert will be missed by many, but especially his children, Marg and Ron, his sisters Irene and Arlene, six grandchildren, six great-grandchildren. Uh, Norbert was preceded by his wife, Lucille, and son, Kenneth. So now therefore it be resolved, we Ferndale's elected officials do hereby extend our community's condolences to the family of longtime Ferndale volunteer, Norbert Brissette. Thank you. May I have a motion to accept?
Support.
Support.
Now moved by Lennon, supported by Galloway. Can I have a, uh, unanimous consent?
Support.
Support.
All right. Yeah, all right, we'll do it that way. Thank you ver, thank you very much. Uh, this is the portion of our agenda where we do council liaison reports. Are there any, uh, liaison members of council who would like to report on any of the following committees?
Can I ask a question? Again, I swear this don't, I don't mean to put anyone on the spot, Mayor, but I wonder, is there a South Oakland County Mayor's Association meeting coming up anytime soon?
There isn't one scheduled. Like, you know what they, my understanding is they typically take the summer months off, so they're taking a couple-month break for the summer.
There's some excitement going on with our neighbors, so I wondered if you were going to be sitting down with our neighbors in Pleasant Ridge and Berkeley.
Ah, not in a, not in a formal Mayor's Association manner.
Probably before 2013, though, I think.
Any other council liaison reports? All right, the next, uh, item on our agenda would be call to council. Police Chief Collins, anything additional for us this evening?
Sheriff, Your Honor, I just would like to, uh, redirect, reiterate that I have made presentation of the 2010, um, annual report, and it will be online, uh, early tomorrow, it'll be posted, probably you, the public can get it, um, right after that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The public should read it, it's always interesting. I always read it.
Fire Chief Sullivan, anything this evening?
Uh, Mayor, Council, thank you for your confidence in both the police chief and myself. Um, our aerial is in Michigan, it's sitting up at J&amp;J as we work for, toward getting our, uh, doors widened, and then we'll get the truck into the city. I don't think the project will take us that long, once we find someone to do it for us. And after that, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Looking forward to seeing that. Derek, is she here? Oh, there's Julie. Yeah, Julie Hall, our Director of Recreation.
Mayor and Council, I wanted to thank everyone who's, has participated in our recent special events, the Trunk and Treasure and the Bike Rodeo, that we, um, did in conjunction with the Police and Fire Department and Ferndale Rotary this past weekend. And also like to let everyone know of the events we have coming up. Uh, July sixth, we will have Family Fun Night at Martin Road Park. We have the George Brothers Band kicking off our activities at six-thirty, and then we'll be showing a movie, Despicable Me, at eight o'clock, over at Martin Road Park. On July sixteenth, we are bringing back our Ferndale Family Camp Out at Martin Road Park, so if you want to have a staycation and get the ten out of your garage, uh, come over and camp out, uh, Saturday evening, July sixteenth. Uh, we are currently registering for our Summer Day Camp Program, which is a state-licensed program, and camp begins June twenty-seventh. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Uh, Derek, anything additional for council this evening?
No, thank you, Mary, good night.
All right. Mr. Fettides, I, I saw earlier, is Byron still here? Nope, I guess he's left. All right, City Clerk, Cheryl.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. City Manager? City manager?
I do want to thank council for, as you mentioned earlier, it was on the consent agenda for both the police chief and fire chief. I think their probation actually expired early in my tenure, I think it was when I was in Florida, or I would have taken care of this earlier, but I want to tell you, I'm sure you recognize, because you've been here lots longer than I have, what quality people we have that lead two of our really important departments, and I want to thank them personally for their cooperation during the time that I'm in here, and well-deserved, although I was thinking we should keep them on probation, keep that work going, but no, they've got, both got a great job.
I'm sure they appreciate you're not doing that.
Second, I wanted to mention that there was an issue with the really well-success, I mean, the good success of the Rust Belt market, their vendors have been taking up some of the spots closest as they unload, and with the help of the DDA and the various members of the staff, Christine has come up with a program that will put them, will issue some weekend parking passes to encourage them to park in the West Breckenridge Lot and the Perry Lot, in the long-term parking area, and they're gonna sell some tag, hang tags for them, which I think will help, but it's really great to have a success like that, where, I mean, I know we need parking in that area, but this is really a great program, and I appreciate the staff, the Police Department, Derek and others, working with Christine to come up with a workable solution. I just want to mention that this evening as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mark, appreciate it. Dan, anything from the city attorneys?
Attorney General, Your Honor.
Chair this evening, thank you very much. Mayor Proton, Kate Baker.
I guess the only sort of big important thing to note, that people may not know was going on, because we really didn't have many people here with us on Saturday, is that the five of us, Councilwoman Piana obviously was here, spent all day Saturday, from eight to four, here interviewing candidates for our new city manager, and we had four very qualified candidates. I was so pleased with the four people that you guys brought in, I wasn't able to make the resume review meeting, but we had great candidates, we are narrowing that down, and we should make the final decision on Friday afternoon. Obviously, we're not doing it this evening because Councilwoman Piana is out of town for business and not able to deliberate with us, but we've, it was surprising to me, I thought for sure that everyone would love the candidate that I liked best, and was so surprised when not everyone did, but everyone had really good reasons for choosing the person that they did as their number one or their number two, and we've had great discussions, we had a lot of discussion here as a group, which I think was wonderful, talking openly about what we want for our city, what type of skillset we want in that seat. So just to update everyone, I believe, three o'clock?
Three o'clock, yes.
We'll start at three o'clock, we'll see how long we go. On Friday afternoon, we will be talking about appointing a new city manager. It probably won't take effects until the end of July, maybe August, so Mark Wallenrobert will be with us probably through the summer, which we are very pleased about.
Just us, we hope to get you out of here.
You wondered how long we could delay, but just an update for the community on that point.
Great, thank you.
I really don't have anything, other than, yeah, it has been busy around here. I think the public will be pleased with whomever, we're so close, so close, with whoever we do decide hire, you will be pleased.
Yes.
Because he or she will be a good candidate, a good city manager, by the way. Other than that, no, but enjoy the weather while we got it, no rain for two days.
Excellent. Councilman Galloway?
Thank you, mayor. There's been a lot of information in the news lately about our longstanding contract with the city of Pleasant Ridge for fire protection services, and I just wanted to get some information out there for the citizens, and for anyone from Pleasant Ridge who may be listening. On, on or about June 6th, maybe June 7th, we received a letter terminating the fire protection contract that we've had with the city of Pleasant Ridge, a relationship that dates back into the early part of the 20th century, eighty-eight years, I believe. And then, curiously, the next day, we received a hand-delivered letter rescinding the notice of termination. So, we had met with the city of Pleasant Ridge a couple, about a month ago or so, and they expressed only complete satisfaction with the city of Ferndale's fire services, they indicated how much citizens loved the service that they received, and the firefighters that assisted them for medical and fire runs, and at that meeting, we made very clear that we wanted a closer relationship with the city of Pleasant Ridge, something that we've really been pursuing for three, four, five years now. There's no way anyone could have left that meeting thinking that the city of Ferndale was interested in somehow pulling out of the relationship, minimizing it, in fact, last year, we gave them close to a hundred thousand dollar discount, as a showing of good faith in hopes of moving forward our discussions to, you know, a closer relationship. We followed up that very plain expression of our intent with a letter, and filed that letter up with phone calls, again, extending our hand, offering to work more closely with the city of Pleasant Ridge. The conversations on the telephone really were a bit indecisive, as I understand it from the city manager, and then we got this notice of intent to terminate the contract. It was rescinded apparently because no council action had been taken when the letter was delivered, and I'm not sure, I understand what's going on with the city of Pleasant Ridge, I'm not sure who does, but we continue to extend our hand and hopefully can develop the long, or, you know, further develop our longstanding relationship with them, and lead to bigger and better things that I think will make their citizens only safer than some of the other options they may be considering. And that's it.
Time will tell. Thank you, councilmen. As for myself, I have two things this evening. The first one is, I just want to reiterate what was said during the Ferndale Public Schools presentation, because I think this is a remarkable program, it's in its second year, but if you're a parent with a child in Ferndale, eighteen or under, our schools are offering free breakfast and free lunch all summer long for any child eighteen or under, regardless of income. So I just want to reiterate, I think that is an extraordinary program, and I just want to make sure all the residents, and especially our parents, understand that that's available. The program is offered at five participating schools, so it's Roosevelt Primary School, University High School, Ferndale High School, Coolidge Intermediate, and Grant Early Childhood Center. So, if you have a child eighteen or under, breakfast or lunch all summer long, basically June 20th to August 25th, free meals are available. I just wanted to reemphasize that, that's a, that's a pretty tremendous program for our students in Ferndale. My second item is, speaking of our neighbors, I believe we have a representative of one of our great neighbors to the west, Royal Oak Township, and I'm gonna take this a little out of order, we might have done this earlier in the gen, in the agenda, but I want to introduce Mr. Harris, right? And why don't you come up to the microphone and talk about an issue that Royal Oak Township has with the city of Ferndale?
Well, first of all, just, good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, as well, council. My name is Hiram Harris, I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation in Royal Oak Township. I came out this evening to simply ask for a, either a reduction in fee, or maybe elimination of fee, for an event that we've had for twelve years running there in Royal Oak Township. We have annual fireworks there. This year's event is scheduled for the 28th of June. The fireworks display itself will begin about 10 o'clock in the evening, and it normally lasts about thirty minutes. This year, I'm not exactly certain why, but we were actually, I received a letter that basically said that for fire protection for the event, which would include a fire marshal, I think, two firefighters, a truck, there would be a total fee of nine hundred and twenty dollars, basically for coverage at this year's event. Obviously, all cities right now are a little bit financially strapped, I didn't know if coming before council this evening would, you know, lead me to a positive resolve, but I simply thought it would be worth it to at least come over, say hello, say thank you, first of all, for the protection that you're giving to our community, and to simply ask to be, maybe for your consideration, in either a reduction of fees for the event, or an elimination of fees. The event itself will only last about between twenty and thirty minutes, and, should I say, that's, that's pretty much why I'm here this evening, and just wanted to ask for some, you know, for a reduction in fees or elimination of fees.
Appreciate it, and I'm gonna ask our fire chief to just address this briefly, it's my understanding that we haven't charged this fee in the past, is that correct? And that perhaps our, our lack of, our staffing levels and the reductions necessitated perhaps this fee this year? Chief, why don't you give us a little history on this? Appreciate it.
Yes, mayor, that is correct. In the past, we have not charged them, and with the short staff and that, we treated it just like a special event. We're gonna need to dedicate a truck there because it is explosives, and they will be there for a period of time. We can't watch just when they do the fireworks show, we have to have someone with those explosives, just like when the movie guys were in town, and they used some sort of special effects or that, we have to watch the whole thing. So, and not being able to waive the fee. Personally, we just filled out the normal fee forms, and the fire marshal has submitted it to them directly.
Now, we, now we do have our four firefighters back, right?
We have two of the four back, tomorrow we'll bring the third back, and one still pending a completed physical from Henry Ford. So yes, we'll have three of the four back by then.
Would you have an issue if we waived this fee?
I would not, sir.
From your perspective? You would not?
I would not.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks, chief.
No problem.
I guess I would like to recommend to council, I mean, Royal Oak Township is not only our neighbor, and we have good relationships with them, I'd like to keep it that way, but also a customer of our fire department, and we appreciate that relationship as well. And so, I would like to suggest to council that we waive the fee entirely, but I'm open to comments or questions from council.
I concur with you, mayor.
I can understand why it was, I mean, the chief's explanation made, made perfect sense, but certainly respect the fact that this is a community event with one of our community partners, and would absolutely agree.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, good. I can't make a motion, but if there is a motion to that effect, this would be appropriate time to make.
I would move to waive the nine hundred and twenty dollar fire protection fee charged to the Charter Township of Royal Oak for their fireworks display for 2011.
Moved by Baker and supported by Lennon, is there any further discussion on that issue?
Thank you for asking.
Yes.
We wouldn't have known, thank you.
Right, well, thank you all for being so considerate, and obviously for allowing the fees to be waived. I'm gonna have to, you know, spend more time, should I say, in Ferndale, I know myself and Julie, being Directors of Parks and Rec, we have, you know, began to try to strengthen our partnership, and do some things as far as collaborations between the two cities, and I don't, I don't need to be a stranger in Ferndale. So I spent quite a bit of time at the high school, doing things with the kids, and, you know, things of that nature, but it's the first time obviously that I've been before council, first time I've had the opportunity to meet, you know, the mayor, and I simply want to say thank you.
And vice versa, your clerk was here a few months ago, I had a chance to meet with her, I know your police chief has been here meeting with our staff, an even closer relationship to Royal Oak Township is very desirable of us, so we appreciate you being here in person, and you're always welcome at meetings, at a restaurant, at a park, anywhere you are.
All right.
Thanks, Mr. Harris.
All right, you all have a good evening.
Appreciate it.
Always better to ask the question than to, you know, just let it, let it slide and chase you much, so it's good.
Mayor, are we ready to vote?
We are ready for a vote, yes.
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
And Mayor Colton?
Yes, thank you, that item passes. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting, thank you.
This is a scary bunch in the local primary, you know.
If Royal Oak Township's chief shows up here, it's gonna be a miracle. They know where it's supposed to be.